I'm not officially closing you guys out, but I want to listen with the folks and the general public who have showed up here. I want to hear what they've got to say. And just in general, we received six different notes from citizens. And one was from Cindy Van Caster. She's concerned about water and drainage. One was from Patricia Evans. She is also concerned about water and runoff. We have Mr. John Brophy on 250, and he's concerned about traffic and the placement of the exit on State Road. Guess what? He's right across the street from it. Rue Van Castor, let's see.
Oh, I'm there.
There you go. Well, I'll let you talk, but hold on a second.
Okay.
Yes, she was concerned that we were having this meeting in December, probably valid in the middle of a pandemic, and should we have put off the hearing a little bit later to generate more folks? So that's valid, but thank you for coming. We got Donald Schneider, who lives on State Road. He's concerned about traffic. The exits are almost directly across. We've got Kathy, or excuse me, Patty Pellegrino, and she's concerned with some of the traffic that goes out on the State Road. So what I'm going to do is I'll make sure that these are entered as written by the folks into the record, and then, one at a time, anybody come on up and tell us what your concerns are. You can speak for or against it, or you can actually even ask questions.
Can I just say something real quick?
Can I stop you?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I just want to say this, because of the situation we're in, if you don't feel comfortable going up to the podium, if we can hear you standing where you are.
Fair enough. That's a valid topic. Thank you. So either stand up where you are, just tell us who you are, what your address is, and what your concerns are. Do you think it's a good idea, a bad idea? Yes, ma'am?
I have a lot of concerns. First of all, I would like to be noted for the record that several of my neighbors, my husband and I, expressed our
Get a pretty good name and address.
I'm sorry, Rue Van Castor on State Road.
What's the address?
1308. And I'll start over. I would like it to be noted that several of my neighbors, my husband and I, have expressed our objection to this in-person-only meeting that was scheduled during the pandemic. We felt it might have been done to discourage people from attending the meeting, which it did. Several people did not feel it was safe to attend any sort of gathering, and the COVID rates are growing now, which kind of means that. I emailed the planning board chairman suggesting that the meeting be postponed until COVID decreases, and I didn't see what they find until February. That is in the laws that it has to be an in-person meeting. I'm sure those laws were before the pandemic. So I just want to express my concern. I'd also like to know if there's anybody else here from State Road. I have some questions. I'd love it if you could write some answers down for me, because if I ask the questions in my though, who gives them away. So is there anyone here from State or around the area?
I'm ashamed.
Okay, you can write this? Can everybody here at least hear?
Not too loud.
No, we're struggling.
Oh, no, the mic isn't plugged in.
We're not on TV, is it?
Speak loud. Okay, I have to speak loud. I may repeat some of the questions that were already asked, but these were questions taken from my neighbors that had emailed me. How long do you expect the whole construction to take? It's four phases. Do you have any ideas for years?
So, like I said, we typically, as we get going, we do on average about 25 homes per year. In that, there's typically a bit of a startup period, that the first year is not 25, and there's typically a little bit of a tail off at the end. So it's in that six-to-seven-year range.
When will this is the town, the village, when will a decision be made on this proposal?
I don't know. It could happen as early as tonight, or we can ask for more information.
Just to correct the chairman.
They are seeking preliminary subdivision and site plan approval. They have to have final approval, which they haven't asked today. They have to submit the plans for that, and that, there will be a public hearing associated with that application. Technically speaking, this public hearing is in conjunction with the variance, not with the preliminary approval that they seek, because the village code doesn't require a public hearing for preliminary subdivision approval. But, so there will be another public hearing, but we couldn't give you a date as to when it's going to be approved, because the law requires that when they submit their final subdivision plan within 62 days, this board has to conduct the public hearing, and then, within 62 days after that, they have to make a decision. So it's dependent upon when they submit their application for final subdivision approval, and they've got to take into account the comments that you've heard before, and there may be some modifications, you know, done to the plan, and so we can't really give you a date.
Could you notify us?
There will be, since there's a public hearing, there will be a notice given, you know, and published in the Webster Herald and on the village website as to when the public hearing is going to occur. The village also has a courtesy, even though it's not required by New York State law, they send out notices. I don't think, do they do the mailing thing?
Yeah.
They still mail to the neighbors, and that, again, that's not required by New York State law. It's something extra that the village does.
Okay. We are, my husband and I are very familiar with Arbor Creek. We've looked at your townhouses. They're very nice. We noticed Arbor Creek, you have 116 ranch houses, and you donated 84 acres of open space. How many acres were the buildings actually built on?
Well, the overall project was 118, so 16 and 18, so we have 34.
Okay. It just seems to me that this development across State Road, over 44 acres, is definitely more densely populated.
It's actually less dense by the number of units per the land that was developed. Arbor Creek, part of that land donation, was it's a lot of wetland. As the Creek, as Four Mile Creek weaves through it, and there's a lot of wetland areas. That's why we dedicated all that open space and really clustered all of the townhouses on the land that we developed.
Okay. And I think you talked about the price of the unit. How would the price of the unit affect property values on the houses that now exist on State Road? Any ideas from the village or?
I don't.
Who knows?
Right.
You would think, again, and I'm not an appraiser of real estate, but if they're building, on average, $350,000 townhouses across the street from you, it's not going to detrimentally affect your property value.
It can help the tax base, because now you're taking that much tax revenue and putting it into the village, and the town, and the area, with a very low impact on the schools.
So our tax rate would not necessarily be going up because of this. Is it zoned properly? And years ago, 35, I think, when the village invited Chance to build there, we were told that if no buildings were put up within three years, zoning would revert to single-family dwellings. And I was curious when it got to R2, because we never were aware of that. I think it was R, Chance had requested R3, and I'm at that time, upset that they did not know whether it was revert to single. Who would have the access to those records?
I've been here for 20 years, and it's been R2. I don't know.
Would the records exist of the meetings that had occurred?
Yep.
Why don't you and I try and take that back and see what we can find in the, do you know, ma'am, approximately when that was? I mean, a timeframe, like late seventies? Late seventies? I can tell you just by looking at the zoning code, it was amended June 9, 1994, to allow single-family dwellings and townhouses. So since at least 1994, it's zoned properly for either single-family homes or townhouses.
And that's the R2?
That's the R2-9.6. We'll still look at it and see if we can find a sequence of events.
Do you expect people coming and going during rush hours, since they're mostly seniors? How is it in Arbor Creek?
Mostly seniors are really off-peak drivers, and we did submit that traffic study. I don't know the exact numbers, but I think that it shows somewhere plus or minus in the 40 to 45 cars during the AM and PM peak times. It's all in the traffic study we submitted. But oftentimes, people have the assumption they see 124 units, and they assume there's two cars per unit, and everybody's going to come and go every day at the same time, and it really doesn't happen, and the traffic studies show that.
Where can we see this traffic study? Is there someplace that we can?
We've submitted it to the village.
Yeah, they've emailed.
So we've shared it. We're happy to share it again, obviously.
We've been told that there's bedrock in that area, and blasting would be necessary if there were basements. Is there bedrock?
There is some bedrock, but we don't have any significant blasting required, especially for the basements. There may be a couple of spots where there's a deep hole in the pond or something that we need to do, a couple of deep spots on the site, infrastructure, but there's no significant blasting required.
And this is, as I said, these are questions I have from my neighbors. Can we assume the current village noise restrictions will be followed? For example, no building noise before 8:00 AM or after supper time?
We'd follow the village restrictions, whatever the guidelines are.
I know the building effect would be pretty hard on these people.
You won't be around for the building.
January 29.
Yeah, that's right.
Nice guy, Linda.
Okay, from the plans that we looked at the other day, my husband and I came down, it looks like there was a depression, not a burn, against across State Road. Can you explain a little bit better what the barriers right on State would be? And I had trouble hearing you before, so if you could speak up.
Yeah, along State Road right now, we actually have some bioretention areas. I mean, there's trees along the right-of-way, and then the bioretention areas, which will be, they will be depression areas. They're meant to just treat runoff. They fill up with six inches of water, and then it's meant to infiltrate and drain out. So there's sort of, there'll be like a landscaped area.
What's that, on the roof?
Well, it treats the pavement, basically. It's meant to treat the water quality for the runoff, for both, you know, it'll collect the runoff from the pavement area and some of the roofs, and it's, basically, it's a required water quality facility that we need to do to meet DEC requirements.
Okay, so there's no real burn, there's no pressure on State?
No.
No, not real. What our goal is, that you can see, we just put a few trees on here, and we would add some more landscaping as we get deeper into it. But the goal is to have a flat area that's along State where we can put some landscaping, and then that bioretention area would be behind that.
And basically, we, you know, we tried to push the units back off of State and do, you know, so that they're, that you're providing some buffer before the first units.
Yeah, and one of the things that we liked about the plan was we did provide a nice big green area along State Road versus having just the backs of townhomes looking at State Road.
We would be facing the front of them.
What's that?
We would be facing the front of them.
You'd see the fronts of the homes versus just seeing the backs of houses.
Okay, approximately how many feet from the State Road to the driveways are what we would see?
To the first road there?
To State Road or to the first road inside the?
No, the first road in the development, from the edge of State, from the south edge of State.
So it's about 110 feet from State Road to the edge of the first road.
Thank you. Could you explain that? I don't understand what that means.
Since the question that she had asked was just
No, I know what the question was. I don't, I didn't understand.
So it's about from State Road to this first road we have here, it's about 100 feet, 110.
Are there townhouses there?
This is just green. This is
It's green, and then there's a road.
Yep.
And then there's townhouses.
Yes.
And we're looking at, I live on State Road, 1306.
You're looking at the fronts of the townhouses.
The townhouses are even further, right?
Yeah.
Ma'am, just so our secretary can keep track.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We need one person at a time to be addressing the board, because we need your name and address. If you want to wait for your neighbor to finish, do whatever you want.
She may want to go home.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I didn't want to come out of the pandemic in the first place.
So the front of those townhouses are about 170 foot from the road.
From the road, and there's a road in between?
Right. There's a, there's a green area, then a road, then the driveway, then the townhouse.
And you said there would be sidewalks, but no walking trails, like you have in Arbor Creek, right?
Right.
What about sidewalks on State Road? Right now, it's not particularly a safe road to walk on, and if there's additional traffic, it's going to be even less safe to walk on. And my husband and I are walkers. Our used to be before my knee got bent, but, and we would frequently walk down from our house to Lincolnshire, and it is not a pleasant place to walk, or a danger to walk. Are there any plans for sidewalks there? And I don't know if that village, um
It's a, State Road's a county road.
Which side are you talking about on the north side of State Road?
We live on the north side, right. But there's no sidewalks on the south side either.
I can't promise you anything other than that I will make our village trustees aware of the fact that, and I'm a big fan of sidewalks in neighborhoods. A lot of have them. I can't promise you anything other than that I will tell them. That sounded like a pretty good comment to me.
Okay, because truly, I know the neighbors on either side of me, and the new ones that have moved on, moved in since, our older ones moved outside and nothing on that, because it's not conducive for walking on that street. We had a question. Could the access road off State Road be moved, one person suggested across from Lincolnshire, one person suggested that's not good, and we wondered whether it could be moved toward, across from the tennis courts, which would be not shining at anybody's development, and it would not cause additional traffic.
Upper right corner.
Upper right corner of the tennis court, across from the
There's a playground.
That's where the drainage comes across the street. There's a drainage pipe that comes in from the north.
Drainage pipe comes in here.
Right at those tennis courts.
Okay, have you considered it going across from Lincolnshire, or why didn't you consider?
They don't own enough land, right?
Yeah, it's off the property a little bit. You know, we basically, we basically reviewed the site distance and, and sort of centered it in the open area here, and then we just, I mean, we tried to move the units off the road there, just to try to keep them, keep a buffer there off of State Road. It was the intent, and in order to do that, it was just sort of to try to center it so that you could feed both sides of the development for people can get in and get to their units.
Most likely, the county DOT will not want an access drive across the street, because it creates more conflict. They'll want to offset it at least 200, 300 feet anyways to avoid the conflict.
Yes, because there's been a lot of accidents on 250 and State, so they prefer them all. Yeah, why can't we put across the drainage? Why does the drainage prevent it from being put there, the road?
Well, we're trying to pick her up, we're trying to fix some drainage problems there. So, because this, right now, this drainage comes here and then goes east, so we're picking it up and collecting it all, and then bringing it.
Okay, the water's going to be above ground? Couldn't it be under a road?
Well, then we have to pipe it all the way.
Yeah, that's, exactly.
Think about it.
I'm not sure I understood that one completely. What were we asking?
We were wondering why the road couldn't go across from the tennis courts, where it wouldn't be shining, no traffic would be shining in anybody's life, there's the traffic, there's the tennis courts.
So the entrance and the exit?
Right.
Oh, to State Road. Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Right, he said there's water problems there, down there, which is, that's where they'd have the drainage pad. But the water wouldn't be on top of the road anyway. Why couldn't it be covered under the road and under there?
Where would the drainage pad go?
You can leave the
That's a problem. I mean, this is, it's just the natural low side of the site, and it's
It's the really wet area.
It's very flat, and it's really wet there.
Yeah.
Matt Mustin, got your question pointing to the road?
Sure.
We were looking at it and wondering, okay, could this road be extended over in front of the drainage, and the tennis courts are there, or this one be extended somewhere there and run down the right-hand side of it? That's what we had thought, is it?
That's, I mean, that's, yeah, so that's a lot of road with nothing on it. So that the village would have to maintain that you don't have any units on.
This is something we wanted you to think about. You said there've been water studies done. What size mains are used in the development or around the development?
Water, the water supply or the drainage?
Supply. Supply.
Sorry.
In it?
What's that? Drainage? Drainage pipes.
She was asking, well, the water. What size pipes are the water?
The pipe coming out of that pond is a 24.
Water, not storm.
Okay, water service, an eight-inch, eight-inch DIP.
Backed on iron.
I'm sorry, what did they?
So it's an eight-inch water main. Is that what you're asking, the water main or the drainage?
It's an eight-inch water.
Eight-inch, duck down, iron pipe that's stayed. If there's water forward, we don't ruin it.
Okay, well, we were wondering, one water tower is already been removed from 250. Does that affect the water flow?
Not at all.
Okay. We've noticed that it's noticeably slower in the morning, the water supply to our area. I mean, when everybody's up and showering at the same time, it's definitely lower. And we wondered when's the last time the water mains on our side of the road were updated.
Unfortunately, you're going to have to talk to the real county owner, the owner you think.
Because to our knowledge, the developments of Arbor Creek, Candlewood, Fawnwood, Philip Road, the development east of State Road School, and one or two other developments on the southeast corner, I'm not sure if there's one or two there, have all been built with no change in the water mains to our road. We think they're still six-inch mains, but we will call the water maintenance that, the water
What depends, because what you have is usually within the development, the mains are six-inch, but once you get out the development, you have what's called a transition main, which could be 12, 16, 18 inches. So if you look at your house, typically, you've got a three-quarter inch pipe that beats everything, and then after that, you've got a half-inch pipe. That's what just controls the flow.
And we wondered how dark, how bright is dark-skies compliant lighting?
We would use the village spec as far as the fixture.
It's a village, village standard wattage, and they have cutoffs, so it doesn't shine into that
It'll be lighter, and if, I mean, we're the new, the black fixtures, it's going to be just like, if you go down there at night, you'll see how bright it's going to be.
Okay. Well, we drove down through Arbor Creek the other night, and we noticed there were only four streetlights.
Yeah, we didn't do a streetlight. It's not part of the village. We didn't do streetlights everywhere. We did them where, where there's some stretches where there's no homes, so we added streetlights where there's no homes, and then where you have the townhouses, you have all the lighting on the buildings.
Okay, we noticed that too. And we just wondered if the village code is different than the town code for streetlights. We will have to check out those. We wondered whether the lights would be shining in our windows at night, but we will drive down South Runway. You said we were going to read Don Schneider, put Don Schneider's email in the minute?
That is correct.
Yeah. He asked that it would be read aloud.
Okay, I can do that. I'm flexible. Let's do that on time.
I'm glad you would ask.
There you go. Mr. Burnham, I apologize for forwarding this to you when I misspelled it. Never mind that part. All right. My name is Donald Schneider. I live at 1300 State Road. I just saw proposed plan for new development, and right off the bat, the first thing that comes to mind is why is the entrance and exit almost directly across from existing homes? Why not align it with Lincolnshire so homeowners don't have to deal with traffic problems, potential accidents, directly in front of their homes? Currently, there is no safety, there are no safety features along State Road, and it appears they have no intention of including any either. If they incorporate walking trails, then they are encouraging walking through the areas. Again, no safety features, not to mention headlights shining into their homes at night constantly. We are accustomed to looking at nature across the street. What amenities are they going to put in place so we can at least get some appearance of nature when we look in that direction instead of townhomes? Nighttime proximity lighting is another issue. Fairly dark skies is the existing situation. What will they be putting in place to keep that environment, environment continuity? I think it means environmental continuity. It seems to me that the proposal might look aesthetically pleasing on paper, but in practicality, it is quite the opposite. Don P. Snyder, thank you very much. And I will also give this to Joe, and she will make it part of the meeting minutes.
And the last thing I had was a note from my six-year-old granddaughter. She wrote this this morning. She asked me why I couldn't pay attention to her, and I said, well, they were putting townhouses across the street. And she said, what? They're going to cut down those trees? So she said, I'm going to write them a letter. Will you tell them? So I told her I would. This is why you should not build houses on State Road. The woods are homes for deer, foxes, spelled F-O-X-I-S, and bears, and bats, and squirrels. Where are people going to hike in the summer? Where are people going to explore nature? Love, Charlie.
Very nice, very much. Thank you very much for that. I appreciate you taking the time to share everything with us.
Thank you.
We have a fair number of other folks. If anyone wants to offer an opinion in one way, yes, ma'am?
My name is Pat Kleimhammer. I live at 1306 State Road, and this meeting is about the variance, and I believe that the builders are asking for a variance
That is correct.
to move closer to a very busy State Road. I don't, I don't
Hold on, let's, let's, let's hear what she's got to say first.
I'm concerned, I've lived on State Road for 35 years. I know what the traffic looks like. And I believe the variance is, is on State Road itself. They want to build closer to the road than is allowed by, no, I'm asking for clarification.
Okay, let me, let me give it to you. Under normal circumstances, you would have been right, because this project is on State Road. It's on corner of State and 250.
Right.
The variance they're asking for is they are going to build, manufacture, or whatever you want to call it, roads inside the development.
Okay.
Then they will take those roads, and they're going to do what they call this dedication. They're going to give them to the village. Village now has to take care of them, plow them and otherwise.
Okay.
So that's now a village road inside the development. So the variance will have to be, then they are subject to all the codes that exist within the village for distance from the setback. Now, if we drive down any of the streets in the Chance Track, you can almost stand up at one end of the street and look down, and you can see almost every single one of them, except for that weird porch that hangs out there in the front, but you can look down the street, and every single house is, the front of it touches the same line. They're all 40 feet back from the road.
Okay.
All right. So when we build these new roads in the track, it will have to be 40 feet back from that. What they're asking for is can they build that 25? What they're asking for is can they build that twenty-five feet back from that? And so, they want a fifteen-foot variance, but it's not from State Road. It will be from the road within the track itself or within the development. Does that make sense to you?
Uh, I might say yes, but
Well, it's from the
Nothing internal roads.
Nothing to do with State Road.
It's these internal roads is what they want to build closer to. This is State Road.
Okay, so the variance is not for this space here?
No.
That is for that space.
Nothing to do with State Road.
That space between State Road and the interior road itself, I think I heard earlier, is something like a hundred feet.
They basically want to have shorter driveways than they otherwise would be required to have to each town.
So, when I, when I
There's not a single driveway that goes out onto State Road.
No, I understood, yeah. I was trying to figure out what the variance is. And the variance is
Fifteen foot. Normally, this would have to be back there at forty feet. They want to move it up fifteen feet, so it's only twenty-five feet from the
From the route.
Well, right. And then he said thirty-five feet on the other side. So, he's only asking for the sidewalk side to be twenty-five feet, so you need that fifty foot there.
Okay. And, and so, this right here, when I, when I look out my front, my front lawn, I'm going to see, first I'm gonna see a road.
Here's State Road.
I'm gonna see grass, maybe a tree or something.
Maybe, correct.
I mean, it'd be nice if you told us there were going to be trees.
Well, they, they have it on the plan. They have, here's the landscaping. So, all these little things are trees.
Okay.
This is to borrow attention. This is the lawn area. They're basically, I've said, and correct me if I'm wrongly, these buildings right here are a hundred and seventy feet from State Road.
Yes.
So, from the State Road, you're gonna go a hundred and seventy feet before you get to the front of these townhouses.
Okay. Well, it's not okay, but I understand.
I want to say one thing though, and this is, this is what's happened in the past. When you look at a set of plans
Yes.
and you see the landscaping, what you're seeing is a, um, a picture of mature trees.
Yes.
The reason I say that is because I've had people say, "Well, wait a minute. On the plans, it showed this tree that was like, you know, eight inches around and then twenty feet high." Well, they don't normally plant trees that big. It'll grow that big. But what you'll see is this is what the mature landscaping will look like once it's matured. So, just to give you an idea.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir, please.
Yes, my name's Bill Jones. I live at forty Dunning Avenue. But I'm here, um, in, for my mother-in-law lives at thirteen forty-one State Road. I'm concerned about the water issue. Can I go over the map?
Sure. Can I, while you're walking over there, that is on the, the south side of State Road, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
That's true. Great amount of store in the property.
See, permiated.
I know the house.
See that pond?
Yeah. She's right here.
The house, the one and only house is right next to it.
Right here, okay. This pond was extremely enlarged by your five-hundred flood, a five-hundred-year flood
thing from the first original one. It never looked this large. This is fairly large.
It was all green space on the first sketch they showed us.
Right now, from this point here, your twenty-four-inch pipe, is that exiting here and going all the way back to the back south? Okay? Is that underground? Everything is buried. Okay, perfect. Across the lot, it'll dump into that six-by-eight ditch?
Or, I know it goes to the big, the big, um, swell that's by the school.
Yes.
So, you're piping
So, I'm piping all the way to that.
All the way to that connection. Okay. You, you realize right now that there's a beaver dam that's, um, backing that up. Right now, that, that flow is restricted extremely a lot. Are you going to address that situation downstream? Because if this has to go to where you say it's gonna go, somebody's gonna have to do something. I'm just letting you know now. Because right now, there's four feet of water in that ditch. So, okay, all right. So, this got enlarged quite a bit. This water from all this development, three-quarters of it is gonna end up here?
Almost all of it.
Almost all.
The only thing that's not is the rear of these.
Okay, okay. Any other overflow exits anywhere on this pond? Is there any way there, any water gonna flow back onto my mother-in-law's property?
There's a spillway.
Okay.
That, uh, that if it ever overflows, the spillway is centralized in here.
So, we have potential for water?
And a catastrophic event.
What, what's that? What year storm is that?
But like I said, it's right now, that pond is sized for a four-hundred-year rain event, so
Okay. What did you figure from the existing Shant's water that comes in right now? There's an existing eighteen to twenty-four inch?
We, we, we sized it for all of that. We sized everything that's coming to it. We took the drainage area.
So, not only a five-hundred-year for here, a five-hundred-year for over here? Okay.
Yeah, right now, the hundred-year pond's, um, a foot underneath the, um, that spillway.
Okay. This pond, what's your, what's your expected depth for that pond?
Varies.
Um, well, I mean, the, um, permanent pool is at, um,
Mike, what, okay, while I'm leading up to that, if you can't make that depth, what's gonna happen?
We've done test pits already through that pond area.
The, the depth, the, anything that's into the rock is strictly water quality and not in the quantity calculations.
Okay. Because the amount of surface area from roofing, macadam and everything else, it's, I, I know this area. There's an existing pond out there now. This, this land does not perk. When this, when you guys dug, dug test pits in August, we've had, we were three inches below water. We were in a drought situation. I'm just letting you know. That, that, that was a huge factor digging test pits when, if you thought it perked.
We, we're not accounting for per, infiltration on the M R design.
Okay, okay, okay. But as long as this twenty-four-inch pipe and everything over here is, 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 no, oh, that's the next question. When is this infrastructure gonna be put in with this pipe to take that water?
So, the plan is just so, I mean, the pond's gotta get built with section one and then this, this stretch has to be put in with section one. We are going to put in the pipe here that's gonna serve section one. We're also putting the pipe in here during the lower, in section four, um, so that this dries out before we go.
Is there any way that something can be encased this, what's this exit again? Twelve-inch exit? The overflow?
No, it's just a emergency spillway, stone spillway to that.
So, rip rap or something like that? Yep, okay. I think that ends my, my, um, my questions because my big concern is, is water. You got it now? We've already had it for thirty-five years and this is, this is gonna
Basically, it's an improvement.
Yep. And then around the pond, what's gonna be, is this gonna be wide open and just tapers right in? So, just, you know, natural grasses around here or any other, and, and, you know, this is some mature trees you're leaving?
Well, whatever's on the property, it's gonna turn out much better than it's on there.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Next, yes ma'am?
Okay. Cindy Vanderkamp, thirteen ninety-five State Road. That's my mom. That's my brother-in-law. Okay. When this first started, the picture up here, there was like a hundred foot of trees left there and the pond was really slum. What happened to all the trees? I know you have to have a pond, but that's ridiculous. You're coming right over, how much trees are gonna be between her house and your green space?
What we, what we did originally was, the original design was, we felt we were gonna continue with the water going in that direction that we currently close and just not increase the amount of water. But when we realized how much water went that way, we changed the design and decided to capture all that water and keep any of it from going to the east and pull it all through our pond.
Okay, so now
So, when we did that, we had to expand the pond size out.
But we went from having a woods there to now basically kind of a swamp that's gonna be, you know, mosquitoes and
Well, it's, it's not. It's a swamp there now.
Well, it's not as bad as
Pond that stops sending water that way is what our goal is.
I don't know, 'cause my husband, I live right next to the school and we've gotten a lot of fill dirt and my husband's taken over a hundred tractor, tractor loads of dirt over because of all the water that keeps coming. So, it doesn't, you know
Our plan is to stop that water.
I hope your promises are gonna work because we are so wet over there. It's ridiculous.
We, we know. We looked at sending water that way. It didn't work, so we went the other way.
But it just seems ridiculous to, like, I don't know, all these cute little, like we said, Will said. The trees you see in the pictures are twenty-foot high and eight-foot wide and we're going from a woods and everything to like a few little trees that may be in thirty, forty years or you know, it's just kind of ridiculous.
I understand.
You should leave some trees.
It's hard to make the drainage improvements that we're gonna make and leave trees at the same time.
Well, how much room, how many trees are you actually gonna leave between the edge of your property?
I don't know.
And, well, how many foot? How much, how much space? I mean, we don't wanna be sitting there looking over at this.
There's a bit of trees that are
Yeah, how many trees are there? 'Cause like I said, the original plan is set, I think sixty feet or more?
Well, there's about sixty feet left. There are, and there's about sixty
The picture looks a lot different than it is.
The south here is, you know, looks like there's about fifty feet of trees that are still there.
Now, see, before it came all the way past the park. You know, and now it's, it's like cut way back.
I understand. We're, we're trying to balance a lot of things. We're also bringing all of the subdivisions and all the drainage
So, is there gonna be, how much trees are gonna be between here and here?
Looks like about seventy feet.
Okay, because when they were surveying and everything, they actually came over in my mom's property. They cut down some, you know, stuff to go through it and she called to find out why they were going through her property. Um, also, um, I lost my train for a second. Oh, the easement. I just have a question about that because the easement was signed, uh, for the water in, with Shant's in nineteen seventy-two. So, almost fifty years ago. There's no, no end on an easement or I mean, and it was signed with another company? So, it just
Is it an easement for what?
For the water that they're talking about because
Drainage?
They're, yeah, the drainage. Because they're bringing the water, you know
Across our land.
Yeah, across our land, which is quite wet anyhow.
Yeah, the drainage goes across their property. But it was, it runs, you know, easement runs with the land.
So, a fifty-year-old easement signed with another company is still, okay. And it's gonna, but it's gonna be piped back there? It's not gonna be
We're gonna pipe that and then it'll be restored back to
Okay, so my husband can still take the tractor out there because it also says in the original easement that there'd be a, a bridge in case we needed it to get the tractor across.
Yeah, the original easement, I think they were trying to build a channel or something.
Just a ditch.
And we're piping that.
So, the land will look just like it does now? So, is it going behind the existing woods? Are we gonna take down part of the woods to get it over to the swell as you call it by school?
There's some woods that all will need to take down, but there's a trail back there that we're trying to follow.
But it doesn't go all the way over?
But it doesn't go all the way.
And if you stop halfway, then you're like right behind my house, which is very wet because the school dumps on us from that side too.
It's going all the way across and following easement all the way to where, where it will discharge to that swell.
Can you mark where that easement is so we, you know?
It's on the point, it's
It's on the back tractor path, all the way to the back. That's where that pipe goes. The furthest back point that you could, you're, you're like twenty feet before the property line, before
So, the back part of the wood is gonna be done?
Exactly. No, there's, there's only certain section in, like the gentleman said, it's marked, state.
All right. I just wish you could save some more trees 'cause like her granddaughter said, it's a shame. I mean, cut everything down and then you're gonna plant trees. It just doesn't make sense. Just leave the big ones that you can and it'll be better for the people across the street. It'll be better for us. It'll just, you know, why mow it down, put it back? And put it back smaller that's gonna take forever to grow.
Thank you. Other comments or questions?
My name is John Carrick. I live at eleven fifty-five Brooks Road, right at the southwest corner of the project there. And I've got a few concerns. Uh, first of all, the zoning or variance went from, uh, what, single-family or whatever you call it there. What, what was the difference in the density?
Well, the density is our, and I, and I know that there was some question earlier on about when it got changed from an R one to an R two. But to my knowledge, it's an R two and single-family homes or townhomes are an appropriate structure for that zone. So, the variance that's being requested then is, as we explained earlier, to build the houses
I understand it. So, in other words, the density is not gonna be increased with this new change?
No, it's gonna be the existing code that the village has for an R two nineteen
It just sounds like it's quite densely populated, you know, a hundred, a hundred and twenty-four homes in a forty-acre site there. It's kinda
It's allowed for the zoning.
I'm sorry?
It's allowed for the zoning.
Okay, so that hasn't changed. Uh, the, the entrance to, to Route two fifty is gonna be tough because that, that traffic at morning and night is, is just hard to get out of the driveway. So, that, uh, I would have thought maybe a couple entrances on State Road would have made some more sense because it's slightly less traffic on State Road than two fifty. I'm sure your study will probably prove that.
Fair enough. The traffic has been brought up
It's really a tough thing.
As a potential issue, we here love it clear.
And of course, you're, you're, I understand that moving a lot of dirt there is gonna ruin a lot of the trees there. There is no green area here that's gonna be untouched, right? There's no area that's gonna be untouched with the, the natural habitat of trees and shrubs?
Just, just a little bit around, along the south property line.
Where's that?
Just along the property lines on the south and the east a little bit. There'll be some vegetation.
Yeah, so basically, uh, the site will be annihilated with, with, with trees and brush. I understand you gotta raise the highs and lower lows to get the things working, but, uh, how deep do you plan on making that pond, that big pond? It took bedrock probably, right?
It's into bedrock by about six to eight feet.
That brushy area there, south of the church, they own that land? They own all that area there, right? So, kinda surprised there.
If they have a revival, they can increase the park a lot, so
They'll make a cemetery, right?
Oh, oh, that's good.
Well, that's, uh, that's all I have. I think it's, uh, it's a little heavy with, with units there. But by the way, you say you're gonna have basements, but your sanitary sewer is pumped up to the
It's not pumped, it's gravity.
Into the Shant's track?
The gravity is all, uh, all the basements are, there's all basements and there's all gravity sewer. I mean, we'll have hung plumbing. They won't, the sewer won't be serving the basements by gravity, but
So, it doesn't work, gravity doesn't work in the Shant's track then? Take us out like that.
So, generally, if I got your comments correctly, in, in general terms, a little bit denser for your taste uh, and you'd like a little bit more tree space or, or a little bit less clear cutting?
You know, there's, the area in between those loopy roads, there's all, shows green and a few trees there. You're gonna undercut that to get extra dirt you need, so it's gonna ruin all the trees there, so who's gonna mow that lawn, by the way?
Uh, the HOA hires a top record.
So the, like, green area is gonna be all mowed, so to speak?
Yes.
If, if your density question, the, the code allows the townhouses should not exceed eight units per acre. They got forty-four acres, they could have three hundred and fifty-two units.
Yeah, we're less than three minutes per acre and the code allows eight.
They're proposing a hundred and forty-four, so it's way less dense than it could be.
Okay, looks like it's a lot more, a lot more units there than the shant track, for example. Per acre.
I'm not familiar with the shant track, we're just going...
Well, that area to the north.
Yep.
Well, you can't compare single-family houses to townhouses.
Yeah, yeah, I understand, yeah.
And I'm sure the total acreage of the shant track, as you say, is much more than forty-four acres.
Well, yeah, several. Nine sections or something like that. Okay, the environmental, you know, where will we change, apparently? That's all I got.
John, thank you very much, we appreciate it. Anyone else?
Yeah, Jim Ladani, eleven sixty-one Webster Road. Prefer four-nine mile point or whatever you'd call it. Been there almost forty years. Couple of things that came up, one was a sidewalk and I think that should be required before anything else gets approved here, okay? Because we only have one chance to shake these guys down and that's what it is, to get what we want, okay? And, you know, and we need, you know, we need a sidewalk along State Road. It doesn't affect me, okay? But I bike it, run it, whatever, it, it wouldn't hurt and this is our one chance, one chance, to get somebody else to build it for us.
I don't know, I don't know what the outcome of that is or if that's even possible, but what I can commit to is exactly what I said earlier, was that I would make sure that the trustees were aware of it and it would have my support, by the way, not just aware. I'm a big fan of sidewalks. I think they belong in our neighborhood. I'd like to make them aware.
So does that mean the trustees would then appropriate village money for it? Or would we take this opportunity to let someone else install it?
Well, I, I think that would be up to them. I think the idea first is that, as I said, it's a good one, we're definitely would come from, Jim, I don't know. So are, are, just so I'm clear and, you know, I'm the village attorney, so I work with the, my primary function is with the board of trustees. So are you looking at a sidewalk just on fronting State Road on the land that this development is gonna be on?
No, we had talked earlier on the north side of State Road.
Where the, where there's a whole bunch of, where there's a whole bunch of traffic. I don't know how big the right of way is, if it even has room for a sidewalk. And then plus, plus how much of state, that side of State Road, when does the, where does the village end? And then all of a sudden you go to the town, so are you looking at a sidewalk from like Route two fifty to Phillips Road or?
Or the church, the church driveway maybe? You know, the, you know how the church driveway comes down on State Road?
Yes.
From there all the way to State Road School, because there's already about a forty-foot sidewalk there anyway.
Well, that's on the other side now, now you're talking...
No, no, it's on the state, on the school side.
Well, that's what I mean, so we're talking about the north side, now you're talking about the south side. We talked earlier about the other side.
Yeah, well, he doesn't control the north side, he only controls the south side.
Okay, fair enough, that's, that's an additional statement.
Also, um, you see, we have a lot of ponds. We need a lot of ponds, drainage is always an issue. And every time, and everybody knows it, every time you have a pond, you have geese. Okay? Are you planning for that the grass come all the way down on a nice slope right to the water's edge? 'Cause the geese love that.
No, we try to leave a buffer that's natural 'cause they don't like to walk through it.
That, that's what I'm getting at. Because, yeah, when you get that tangled up stuff and people won't like looking at it, but it keeps the geese out.
Yeah, no, you gotta leave a buffer that's natural.
Okay, I work with the Friends of Webster Trails. Um, so this, from this, from this point of view, just south, I guess it'd be south of where that group home is? I think there's a group home on State Road?
Yeah, there is.
Is what appears to be the most desirable piece of this whole parcel. There's a pretty good-sized woodlot in there. Small forest maybe, second grove, beech, maple, um, few cherries, stuff like that. I would like to see that preserved and incorporated into what you're doing here. You might have a few less units, but I'm sure people will pay more for a view to that or have it in their backyard, okay? Right up the road from here, we have Case Park. And I don't know how or when that got put in.
Shantburg, me?
No, Case Park. Case Park, okay? Right here in the village, right? A nice little walk through a few acres of the same thing, second grove of, you know, trees. And if we could have something like that happen here, I think it would be great. If we could preserve that, part of that anyway, instead of just clearing it all the way to the lot lines, the way this, the way this shows. And then the drainage you say is gonna go off the southeast corner? Pretty much go southeast, head northeast? It's all Four Mile Creek, right?
Eventually.
It all gets into Four Mile Creek, right, on easements and things? From the point of view of a trail, walking, biking, whatever, all the way from yours, I guess it'd be your southwest corner? I would like to see provisions anyway for a walking path across there to that easement, follow that easement, right? That easement's gonna go to wherever it's gonna go.
That's not a trail easement, that's just a sewer easement.
Huh?
That's just a sewer easement, not a trail easement that we're going into.
Not yet, no. But if it was...
No, it's an existing, it's a existing drainage easement. So you would have to get permission of the property owner.
Exactly, yes, yes.
Have a trail across their land and they're shaking their heads over there that they don't think...
No, I'm, I'm just, I'm just, you know, when, when you think about it, you could connect that along the, like, um, Four Mile Creek all the way up to, eventually, I guess it'd be Salt Road and Ridge Road. From there, it's only a short hop to the bike path. So there's a lot of potential here for a through, for a through path. But not if it gets pieced off. So if we could at least have part of it preserved, easement, you know, for, for, for that purpose, at least it's there. You're shaking your head. Easements are impossible?
No, no, no.
Oh, then why are you shaking your head?
You're asking for permission to walk on people's private property.
You can do it when there's an easement, can't you?
But you gotta get them to sign the easement.
You have to get every individual property...
Yes, yeah, I, I, I understand that, but you've gotta start somewhere. That's my point. That's all, you know, preserve some of the woods and, and leave it as a walking path.
Just like they don't want the people walking across theirs. Eventually, there's gonna be homeowners that live here that aren't gonna wanna walk, people walking through their backyard either.
Well, we have people walking down a road in front of our house, oh, every day.
It's a road.
Can I just answer that? I mean, okay, my brother-in-law, my brother, neighbor, a hunt back there now, which is probably gonna be ruined because of the houses next door and how far you gotta be away from everybody. And then to have people walking back there, we already have, over at the school, right next door to where I live, we already have people parking out there. We call the cops regularly because people dump animals over and in there, they're partying back there and everything, so... Sorry, but I don't want anybody walking out behind the house in the field. It's just kinda scary.
I think all the deer and everything will come around your property, so something might actually be better.
Yeah, but you can't shoot them because everything's too close.
Okay.
We'll pack it.
Any other, yes sir?
Yes, Mayor's Brian Quigley, I live at thirteen twelve State Road. Um, I have a question, like, I have a storm drain that's beyond my driveway that goes under the road across the street. How is that taking care of here, is that tight?
Is that, is that the big culvert?
Uh, I don't, I, I'm not sure the challenge. My house is right here, I've got a storm drain here and it goes under the road and empties out right there.
Yeah, I mean, it'll just, it'll get...
So that, will that be filled then or will it just...
Daylight here, go over the...
The other question I have is, this road B, this section right here, looks like if there's cars traveling down this at night, it's gonna shine. I've got a big picture window up here every time it's been opened. I don't want headlights shining and lighting up my whole house. Would it be possible to make sure there are trees or shrubs or some, something that will block headlights maybe on...
Yeah, these are, these are a couple of trees proposed.
Right, but again, yeah, just make sure...
But we can look at, we can keep that in mind when we're lining up trees, that if it's coming straight down the road, we can line them up for you.
Perfect, that would be awesome.
Yeah, sure, be happy to work this up like that.
I think that's all I have.
Richard Wolder, Twenty Elm Street. I've got a couple of questions, some of them for the board here. The first one, uh, we talked about parking, uh, well, I guess this is for you guys. I'm an empty nester, you could say, that because the nest was never filled with kids, but I'm an in that age group that you're talking about. Where's this project, and the board should look at this too, where's this project gonna be in twenty years? In twenty years, most of us, baby boomers, are gonna be gone. Which is what you're selling this to, is basically empty nesters. The big spurt of that is now the baby boomers. There, that's where the man's coming from. Where is this project gonna be in twenty years? Aren't we developing another area that's gonna be what Killeberger Park was fifty years ago? Most of you don't remember that, but it was not the best neighborhood. So this is something that should be looked at. The other question I have is the parking. You say it's gonna be one, maybe two cars per family. I'm an empty nester, my wife and I, between the three of us, two of us, we have three vehicles. And I'm looking for a new travel trailer because I just, within the last couple of years sold my old one. Where do I put that?
We have restrictions that you can't have travel, travel trailers and boats and things stored outside.
And with, I'm glad to hear they have basements, but I looked through other tracks. Uh, most cars with a two-car garage, you find two cars outside and the grill and a lot of other things in the garage. So parking, I think there should be more parking on the site. I see other developments that have an occasional extra area for parking.
We're gonna look into putting some supplemental parking on it. It's one of the common things that we've heard is adding some supplemental parking. Part of too what's nice about a townhouse community with HOA is that people don't own the lawnmower, the tractor, the lawn equipment, all those things is contracted out. So the garages are pretty clean and that's part of the reason why I live there, is they don't wanna own those things.
Well, I've read through other developments that people find things to fill their garages up with. Yeah, not everybody, some people are pack rats. Yeah, so I think somewhat more additional parking on the site somewhere would be nice.
And I welcome anybody to drive around Arbor Creek and look to see if you see a parking, you know, that's the same setbacks we're talking about here. And we don't have cars in the streets and parking issues and cars outside. These aren't problems that I ever hear about my residents or the impression I ever get when I drive through.
Here's the only thing I'd ask you to think about there. Under normal circumstances, I would agree with you a hundred percent of the time. However, nobody, it's kind of like laws. We don't make laws for most of us. We make them for the one or two people who we have to modify their behaviors. We don't build these houses for the holidays. We build these holidays, these houses, for most of the time, like you said, retired couple, mom and dad, no cars or, or two cars at a max. It's, it's the one-offs that I'm most concerned with there is what happens when you have a birthday party? What happens when you have something, you have a death, cut from bed?
I've agreed with you that we're gonna look at putting some extra parking.
Yeah, you did. All right, fair enough.
But no, I'm just saying that even the way it functions currently, I haven't had residents complaining to me about how it functions as far as the parking with the one-offs and the things that happen. And I don't drive through and feel like it's inundated with cars, that it feels like a sea of parking.
We're gonna address it, that's good.
So, and I'm still gonna look at it because the board asked me to, but it's not a problem where I'm currently developing a very similar community.
Understood.
Okay, and on the subject of sidewalks, which keeps coming up, I see absolutely sidewalks only on one side of the street. I live in the old part of the village, we have sidewalks on both sides of the street and still find people walking in the road, even after plowing the sidewalk. Uh, so I would suggest, I would like to see sidewalks on both sides of the street so that six-year-old doesn't have to run across the street, even though it's a small neighborhood, I know, to get to the sidewalk on the other side of the street. Traditionally, Old Webster Village, sidewalks, both sides of the street, you can walk on either side and see either neigh, any neighbor you want without crossing the street or have to walk on the other side, cross over, walk down, cross back to see who you wanna see.
I'd actually like to answer that question. Based on our manpower and how many people we have and the sidewalks being dedicated to us, we would probably rather have it on just one side of the street because of maintenance.
Uh, look at the Town of Penfield, the Town of Webster has just added sidewalks down one side of Ridge Road, except in other areas where there is more foot traffic, where they've put it on both sides. Town of Penfield is mandating developers to put sidewalks on the main street, not in the development, but on the main streets so that they can connect to other neighborhoods. Eventually, when they finish their project, which may be a hundred years, who knows? But I would like to see more sidewalks and I would like to see the sidewalk connected to the village. Right now, it's only neighborhood. Is there any way you can connect it down State Road and into the rest of the village or down Webster Road?
And a little sidewalk to connect to.
Well, there, there's no sidewalks down Webster Road until you hit the village line.
I know.
No sidewalks with Lincolnshire, what, what, where would you like them to connect, Rick?
Well, I'd like to bring them into the village. Right now, they're only in that neighborhood. At least put a crosswalk somewhere so they can go into the shant track or walk down to the school.
But you just said you didn't want the kids walking in the road.
That's why we have crosswalks and stop signs and caution signs. Okay, I think that's what I had there, thank you.
Rick, thank you. We have an opportunity for anybody else? Yes, ma'am?
I just have one question about the basements. I know some of yours at Arbor Creek are walkout basements, are these gonna be walkout basements entirely? Seems like there's differences in, in Arbor Creek, there's higher points and lower points and this one seems more flat.
Uh, there is a variety here too. Some of them are daylight basements that show four feet in the back, some, some show six feet in the back and some will be engraved walkout where it's fully exposed. There is a variety here, same way.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? All right, thank you very much.